...report to SciTech and to us yesterday. SciTech hasn't had a chance to review the comments that she made. And they've officially asked for a continuance until our September meeting. And that would be...
Okay, we'll open it.
We open the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Seven thirty-seven. I move that we accept the minutes from our July meeting.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right.
Here we go. Charlie, who requested that?
Well, we have to open the meeting.
We did.
And officially continue it.
Charlie?
I said we'll have to open the meeting for...
We did.
Okay, we did. We just opened the meeting, they had the minutes. I didn't hear anybody mention...
Well, that was the minute.
I just made an announcement, that's not official.
No, no, that was...we did that after that.
I just wanted to know who...the announcement that you made? Who requested the...who requested the...
SciTech.
SciTech.
I move that we continue the hearing until our September meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Now, will we continue to...
September 14.
September 14, seven thirty P.M. Here at Town Law.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Ballen from SciTech Engineering, represent Hawthorne Development. The notice of intent that we filed for Lot Two, Natty Pine Estates. Like the other lots, we've been in there before. There is some buffer zone activity on this property. There's a little bit more on this because of the proximity of the wetlands and the amount of wetlands on this lot. So unlike the past RDAs we've been in there with, this is a full-blown notice of intent because the majority of the work is taking place in the buffer zone on this site, not just like some grading in the backyards like on those other lots. So again, following notice of intent to construct a single-family dwelling, associated driveway and utilities, as you can see on the plan, the majority of the house is within the buffer zone. It's to a bordering vegetated wetland. The proposed limit of work that was shown on the plan is the same as what was approved for the limit of disturbance for the subdivision where we have to go through natural heritage. In that line that we establish is at a minimum twenty-five feet off of the bordering vegetated wetland line. So you can see the limit of work is at least twenty-five feet away. In the dwelling, at its nearest point, would be thirty-one feet off of that line. So it'd be the dwellings would meet the setback, the fifty-foot setback. Again, the majority of the work is in the buffer zone, let's say maybe, I don't know, about sixty percent of it, the other forty being outside. The house has been graded, so at the front of the property will drain towards the street, the back of the property, which would just be some rooftop runoff, and the rear yards will drain towards the wetlands. So you happy to answer any questions that you would have on this property?
The amount of water that's going to run is off the driveway and the roof. Roughly, what is the square footage on the driveway that's going to be running back, Jeff?
Well, the way the property sits, the majority of the property, well, actually, the existing conditions of the property is one consistent slope.
Some are gonna run this way.
Yeah, from the road, the property slopes from the road down to the wetland now. So basically, what we're gonna be doing is building the foundation up, grading the front of the property to drain towards the street. The driveway itself is grading, is graded to drain down towards the wetlands because it's a garage under, you know, walkout.
Why is it gonna go this way?
Yeah.
And this way?
Yeah, but the...
I go these two directions.
I mean, no runoff from the street will get into the driveway.
Yeah.
But the driveway itself is sloped.
I can see that fifty-seven.
Yeah. Will be sloping back because of the grade we're gonna need to get into the garage under. So the driveway's gonna be going down, there'll be a hole of retaining wall on a portion alongside a portion of the driveway that we're gonna grade into to raise the front of the grading in the front of the house to drain towards the street. But again, the lot itself is kind of in a low area, thus the proximity to the wetland in the back. This Lot, Lot Two and Lot One is the same type of situation.
There isn't a house on Lot One?
No.
And this is somewhere said Avenue over here?
That's correct. Yeah, that's going towards the front of the subdivision.
Yeah, okay. No, I'm just making sure of the numbers. I was just there a couple days ago, driving through.
Yeah, these two lots, Lots One and Two, are the, from a design standpoint, are the trickiest because of the amount of wetlands on them. You know, once you get onto Lot Three, you can see the wetland line kinda almost does a ninety-degree bend and goes up in the back here. So from Lot Three on, you have a lot of separation from the wetland to the roadway.
Yeah, all the lots are sewed anyway.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so that's good.
I mean, you will have about sixty to seventy feet of lawn area that the runoff that does get down the driveway would have to pass over before it works its way into the wetlands.
Okay. At the twenty-five-foot buffer zone, the no-touch zone, planning to have any markers designating that area as a no-touch zone?
It will be marked as a no-disturb area for the, what we're doing with natural heritage. So we all have the signs that they require to be placed every...
Are these stone markers or...?
Well, it will be bounded. There are some areas that will be bounded on that, but there'll also be some signage that will be installed.
Same with Centus Street Woods.
Yeah.
Okay, just...
Because that is a line, you know, what was shown here on the limit of work, that is a line that has been established on a recorded plan that we cannot disturb beyond. That was all part of the mitigation for natural heritage.
Okay, so that's gonna take care of this one. You don't have a missing lot, how much to it's gonna be, it's gonna deal with that for a while?
I know.
Okay. All right. I don't have any questions, I think we're done. All set?
I make a motion that we close the hearing and issue a notice of intent.
Order of conditions. Order of conditions.
I'm sorry, order of conditions, it's all right. We give over if that happens.
I'll second that.
Oh, I'm sorry about this.
I was just curious, is it, do you open the floor to questions or do you know more or just...
Sure, absolutely.
I was wondering that too.
Yeah.
I just don't know the proper way to...
Before the motion was taking place. I guess I had two questions. You had mentioned that there was, that there was no disturb area and that you were gonna be working and sixty percent of that was not in the disturb area, but forty percent could be in the disturb area, is that true?
Lycel by law has a twenty-five-foot understood vegetation zone from an established wetland line.
Okay.
There's a fifty-foot no-construction zone, houses and buildings. That's all part of the hundred-foot buffer that's allowed in the wetland now.
Oh, okay, so that's why...
The house is being built in the buffer zone to a wetland. This one has a little different problem because it also has a conservation restricted area in each, in most of the lots to handle the turtles that were found in the majority of the wetland area.
Okay. Oh, very good.
Okay, so he, right now is, when I asked about markers, that he's gonna mark the no-disturb zone, and that's also national heritage, natural heritage, that's requiring him to do it, not just us.
Okay.
And then there'll be another twenty-five feet, he can put grass in that twenty-five feet, but he cannot build in it. He cannot put sheds or pools or anything like that in. That has, is no construction in that zone, but he can use it as a yard. But the twenty-five foot is completely off limits to the wetlands.
Okay, we're not even gonna be doing that. Because that's in the conservation restricted area, we're not even gonna disturb anything there. There'll be no lawn, there'll be...
The conservation restricted area is the twenty-five-foot under-sturb zone to the wetland, to the...
That's good. Yeah, the, basically what would happen, just to backtrack, the location of the silt fence that you see on this plan, we had to do a turtle sweep before we started any construction. So it was up to us, you know, we could have, I wanna say on these lots, if I remember correctly, we could have used all the lots because we factored in all the lots as being built on, or at least all the uplands, and that's how we came up with our mitigation number. So the lots themselves aren't restricted, but the location of the silt fence, when we put that in and did the turtle sweep, we can't do any work beyond that.
Yeah.
Beyond that. And along that line is where we're gonna put some markers because it will, we're gonna put boundary markers to delineate the area, and there's also gonna be signage to let the homeowners know that's a conservation area.
We have a similar project on Centus Street.
Right.
And they had, in the conservation restriction, signage was required.
Yes.
X number of feet apart.
Yeah.
Coupled to a lot, depending on the width.
Right.
And their permit.
We have one more question.
Okay, I have, it's a two-part question. First of all, I'd like to know, what's the size of the lot there? Not counting any of the buffer property, the actual size of the lot.
An acre, just under an acre, forty-three thousand five hundred and nine square feet.
Okay. And then when people actually are living there, they'll know that they can't like go to that buffer area, and is that, well, the twenty-five feet away from the wetlands, who owns that property? Is that the property? The town. So the town maintains the wetlands?
No, no, the wetland, the wetland is on private property.
There's two different items there, I think.
The wetland's on the private property.
Okay.
But there's wetlands behind that that has been given.
Correct.
And I'm not sure if it's exactly that parcel there.
No, it's parcel A, yeah, parcel A in the back here.
Okay, behind, okay. So here is the lot, here's where the house is gonna be. This wetland will be on the person's property, but the wetlands here and going all the way through for about eight hundred, nine hundred feet belong to the town with conservation Okay, so that goes out behind Great Terrace and it goes all the way to, actually to the landfill.
How many acres does that go? Fifty-six?
But, but not all conservation, it's town property.
I think it might have been a little bit less than that. It's around that though, forty-five to fifty acres in size that was given.
Yeah, I think it was four, I got, I was just looking at the deed today and I didn't look at the numbers. Forty-seven acres maybe?
Yeah, somewhere in there, yeah.
That was given to the conservation.
Right.
Who was that given by?
The developer.
John...
Hawthorne Development.
Hawthorne Development.
The applicant for this site.
Because of the wetlands, he could not cross and go beyond a certain point, so what he did was to deed it to conservation. And that alleviated him from paying taxes, but we've already started using it in a conservation way. There's a hundred fifty American hybrid chestnut trees out there already.
So there was access to it?
Limited access. It's, because it's a lot of wetlands, you know, we don't want people going through on dirt bikes, which is illegal.
Right.
And walkways and all that, I don't know, if people wanna go through and get ticks, I mean, hunters are out there, but it's not where you'd want to take your kids along. I've been out there, 'cause I live on Great Terrace, and believe me, the briars are thick and when it rains hard, a lot of water.
Is that like a standard procedure if there's a development going in and it has a large parcel of wetlands, that it would be deeded to the town?
It's up to the developer.
Well, in this case, National Heritage required the conservation restricted area to make up what they consider the take of what, of turtle habitat. Originally, this project was much bigger than eight or nine or ten, whatever lots you have.
Eighteen?
Fifteen, if you factor in the formula lot that was added that year. It was fourteen originally in the subdivision, but then a fifteenth was added off the roadway,
Initially, it was gonna be forty.
Thanks, go ahead.
I guess I had two quick questions. One was, I, we have, I'm a, I belong to an association in Westboro, and when we have houses that are being put on the property because it's very tight, if there's a larger surface area, we require French drains for all rain runoff, just to try to reduce the amount of water that would be on top of the ground. Do you guys do any of that type of...
They already have the site. This is already in place for the roadway. You have the, what do you call them there, the pawns there, the detention pawns?
All that's been, yeah, all that's been calculated and figured in as part of the development. Sometimes what people do is they'll factor those in when they're doing a drainage couse for the overall subdivision, the houses are gonna have them.
Yeah.
So therefore, the lots in there have to have them.
Right.
In that development. When I did the drainage couse, I don't like to restrict the lots in that manner, so unless I necess, you know, absolutely have to, I don't like to put any restrictions on the lots.
Okay. Depending on the style of house, the surface area...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
...occupying. I know we've, as far as this association has belonged, we've always replied, because it's tight. No, thank you.
Okay, now, but two or three detention basins on the site, on the...
Two, oh, I'm sorry, three. You have the one out front and then the two in the back.
Yeah.
One halfway and then the one at the...
Very end, near the end.
Yeah.
Next to the house that's going up now and then...
That's correct, yeah. But there is access to parcel A, just getting back to that. I don't know, I'd have to look at how it was needed. I don't know who the, who owns it, like who Hawthorne Development deeded it to?
What do you mean, to access?
The parcel A, yeah.
No, there's, I think it's a...
Well, there's a thirty-foot access on the cul-de-sac to get back into it. But I don't know if it's, like if it's privately owned or, is it owned by the...
No, it's, no, it's conservation.
Okay, town of Dayton. Under the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
Sure. So that is the town property in the back.
So I don't know where, if you go back there, there's a house on the left and they're building one on the right, and it's in between there. I, I mean, I didn't see any boundary markers for the house, so I don't know exactly, you know, is it this thirty feet or is, you know, I don't know, but it's there. When I access it, I go through another area.
Does that sign in the street?
I think most...
Everybody signed in? You and Mike, you didn't sign in?
Okay.
You're better than that, right?
Any more questions?
Any more questions? We're good to go. Let's do it again.
Okay, I make a motion that we close the hearing and issue an order of conditions for the property.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
That's you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting here.
You want this one here?
Yeah, please.
Okay, well, I put some numbers on there that you saw. Okay.
Good night, guys.
You too.
Jennifer Burgess. Represented by...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Conservation Commission. For the record, my name is Michael Paragamo, and I'm an attorney with Brainsky Levinson LLC with offices at fifteen forty-seven Fall River Avenue in Seacombe.
Go a little slow, Michael, with the last name.
I apologize, I know it's a little long.
That's okay.
It's Ephesian Frank E.R.R.A.G.A., M is in Michael, O. Members of the board, the reason we're here tonight is the applicant's request to construct a residential solar array, approximately eight point eight kilowatt of residential array, measuring five hundred eighty-seven square feet on the property. It's nineteen ninety Wellington Street. This is an approximately one point two three acre parcel. And it's more specifically referred to as map, Assessors Map eleven Lot Two dash three. Your applicant went before the zoning board of appeals for a special permit to construct the solar array. That special permit request was conditionally granted, subject to this board's approval that the construction would be within, in conformity with the town of Dayton's more restrictive conservation bylaws than what is provided for by the Mass DEP. The reason that this issue came up is that, and I'm gonna pass around and I'll leave
I'm still trying to find out where nineteen ninety Wellington is.
Nineteen ninety Wellington is, if you're heading westbound on Wellington Street, just before Smith Street, it's on the right. This is an L-shaped parcel.
Okay.
It's got, it's a single-story rash.
What's all this stuff?
Well, all that...
That's why I downloaded that from the town map to you, little wetland.
Okay.
Right.
They only impact a lot, as you can see on the...
Yeah, but is this a stream right here?
Yes, there is.
Yes.
And there's a delineated wetland. The house originally was permitted by the Conservation Commission, I don't know what year, but, and that wetland line was established is a brook that runs along the east side of the property.
And if I may...
Go ahead.
That delineation is located on the map that I provided to you as well, and you can see, we tried to highlight best as we could where that running wetland delineation was made. It also indicates the fifty and the one hundred foot buffer. The solar, proposed residential solar array is going to be constructed outside of that buffer. It's actually on the...
On the opposite side of the house, actually?
Yes. It's here.
This'll be a ground-mounted...
Correct, and so it's gonna be constructed on pylons and, if I may, tree two more.
Yeah, we're pretty familiar.
Are you gonna be working in the buffer zone at all?
Sorry, if I finish him.
I didn't, I thought you were just talking to yourself.
No, I was talking to him.
I can address either question if you would. It's going to, the construction of the array will be outside of the delineated wetland stretch. The reason we're here today was because of a, what was marked on this map and flagged at the time on the northern part of the property. So if you think of the property as a seat by the back and then the base of the seat, there is what's marked and connoted as an isolated wetland. The construction of the array, and it would be four essentially concrete pillars that the array stands on, the construction would be if that were a wetland within that zone. However, the problem is, we had a wetlands biologist go out to the property because we had concerns of whether this, of what the accuracy of the survey was. When we did so, we determined that what had, what was, what has been marked as an isolated wetland is not actually a wetland, but a depression. What I can show you are... Again, soil samples? Exactly. Plenty of this one. From the northernmost and southernmost borders of the purported isolated wetland. And as you're aware, if this were just the Mass DEP regulations, this wouldn't be a concern because Mass DEP jurisdiction does not fall, does not cover isolated wetlands, but because your regulations are more restrictive and they do define that within your jurisdiction, that's why we're here. However, if you look to these pictures, and I'll say, I am not a wetlands biologist myself, however, the expert was able to provide me with an explanation as to what the wetland would look like based on the soil samples. And I'm sure you understand that if we were to be looking at a wetland here, what we would be seeing from these soil samples is mottling. That's a change in the color as the layer, as you look down the various layers of the soil. We don't have any of that here. What we had is very coarse dirt. And essentially, it confirmed our suspicions that what we had is not a wetland at all, but a, if you were to look at the topography of the property, it's simply a depression at the bottom of a hill. In fact, the northern part, the northern property line...
Okay, yeah, okay, I'm gonna back up here now.
Sure.
You're developing a lot of questions with me. Okay, here we have the parcel that's in question.
That's correct.
Over here, we, it shows wetlands, over here, it shows that there's a stream.
That's correct.
I don't know, first of all, where you even plan, where this proposed array is going to be.
Right here.
Oh, right here?
Yes.
Right here. Okay, so it's not gonna be over here near the wetland?
No, 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 it's gonna be to the west of the house, just right here.
Oh, okay, all right, that was, okay.
It's on the developed lawn area.
Okay, all right.
This is taken from the Mass DEP wetland website, and it doesn't show any isolated wetland at that area. It shows a stream that connects the wetlands.
Oh, no, I didn't know, I didn't know if he was gonna come down here into this area here. So it's already an open, it's already a grassed area.
Exactly.
Okay, okay, all right, well, that's...
And the reason I did this was, I couldn't understand why, over the telephone, we had a conversation, how wetlands affected the array they were going to install over here, because I had already been online, and this is what DEP shows, wetland, it's a five, wetland, 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 nothing there.
Okay, well, that, that, the sea tells it all comparing here and here.
Correct.
I mean, I didn't know if he was gonna have them all down through here, okay.
No, I don't know how this delineated, apparently when the original house was built, that may have been, but it doesn't show it on the DEP wetland map.
And we don't know when the, we don't know when these purported flagging, the purported flagging was done, we don't know by whom, their qualifications and so forth, but when we had our wetlands biologist go out to the property, we were able to... we had our wetlands biologist go out to the property, we were able to extract the soils that you're seeing before you.
So this, this array, okay, thirty, forty-four feet by, I don't know, what is it, 13 feet?
About 13 and a half feet or so. It comes out to 587 square feet in all. And it's going to be a...
Twenty-eight by 28.
Okay.
Or is this the septic or is this the array?
That's the existing septic.
Okay. So it's behind that.
Exactly. And you can see, we've marked with four dots where the...
That's when they need a pump, they can just plug in.
It's not a bad idea.
Now, this is a very good, it came before the commission unofficially, I don't know how many years ago, they had proposed to add to this garage. And this wetland eliminated that possibility.
Yeah, we got the stream.
Because it would have been within the 50-foot, no construction zone. I mean, we've dealt with this property before, and I'm almost positive that we were involved with the original construction, just because of this wetland and the brook.
Correct, and that would be well within your jurisdiction, and it absolutely required your monitoring of that construction. However, what we're talking about here is a simple construction of an accessory.
Well, you know, when I see the size of this and the location, and we have just done, dealt with 12 15-acre arrays, and that was, when I'm thinking of that, and then, and then this puts it into perspective for me.
This is a pea shooter by comparison to that.
Yes, yes. Well, it's probably, what, 20 panels?
Maybe. I'd have to review.
Maybe not even that many, 40 foot. Does each panel have to be four by eight, something like that?
Right, and the total output is gonna be no more than 8.8 kilowatts. This is purely for purposes of powering this house alone.
Who's, who's going to do the construction?
Gutsun Go Solar.
Who?
Gutsun Go Solar. It's owned by Ron Bennett.
Of Route 44?
Yes, yes. You may have seen a couple of their signs around town, they're the orange ones that say Go Solar.
Gutsun?
Yes, actually, I can give you their card if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
Sure. I would remember that I already had my materials with me.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
And it may be that if the board has specific technical questions with regard to the construction of the array tonight, that I would ask that we have, that the board issue a conditional approval on confirmation, further discussion with the engineer, Ron Bennett.
What are these, are they in the board looking for? A letter from the Conservation Commission?
That's my understanding, is they simply want confirmation that this is a permissible...
Outside our jurisdiction.
Correct, a permissible construction.
Well, you know, I think, I mean, if it's outside our jurisdiction, he doesn't have to file.
No.
So there's no, no notice of intent, no N red, it's just...
The problem is that this, this plan was part of the property, and this popped up, and it affected the area they want, it would be probably within 50 feet or even closer to the wetland, the array that you planned.
It would be, yes.
And I don't believe that that is there. I wasn't sure when you were talking about plant, putting it, that's why I printed this out for the commission. And I don't see a wetland anywhere near that property, in that particular spot.
Because you, you won't have to even do any excavation, just, you're just gonna...
No, it's an area, actually.
It's where there's...
Well, where the array is gonna go is actually the lawn there, so...
Yeah.
We're not going anywhere near that.
Just put sonar tubes in and build it up.
Usually, they usually just drive, they'll drive columns.
Okay, don't even put the sonar tubes in.
I-bean pipe.
They drill a hole.
Well, if it's rocky, if it's rocky, they'll bore a hole, and then they've got approximately four-foot shredded things that they put in, and they fix the panels for them.
Okay. Looking at it, it, it doesn't come in, within our jurisdiction, and I think a letter can go to the, what'd you say, the planning board?
It's only Board of Appeals.
Yeah. ZBA.
We can include one of these with the, whatever we agreed to defend them. Well, I mean, it's pretty obvious it doesn't show a wetland there. This is what they went by.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it, that was good observation on their part. I think that that's important, that they're looking for the interest of wetlands as well. And, and maybe these two as well. The three papers. Okay, I moved that we send a letter to the ZBA informing them that it will not infringe upon any wetlands. All within our jurisdiction.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Gets rid of you, Michael.
If you leave a copy of, I would send you a copy of the letter as well.
Oh, that would be excellent. Thank you. Oh, let me give you the office number as well. And of course, if there are any questions, happy to address them. Thank you very much.
If we're through with this, I'd like to make a request. Okay.
I want to address the commission.
Okay.
Monday, I met with the building inspector, Tuesday, I'm sorry, building inspector and the property owner of Lot 7, Centus Street Woods. When that subdivision was constructed, they removed trees, they removed a small 2,250-foot section of conservation restricted area. Right now, it's barren, it hasn't been replicated. The contractor was supposed to have planted shrubs, mulched the area, made it look like something that should be next to somebody's front yard, or part of their front yard, actually. And he hasn't done that yet.
This goes back to last year now, doesn't it?
It goes back more than last year. We issued conditions with an IDA for that particular lot. And one of the conditions, he proposed to do this planting, never submitted a plan. But he proposed to do the planting, and he's ignored the property owner's requests, written requests from the commission, verbal requests from the commission. The building inspector was there on another note, there are problems with the house that he wants to get straightened out, and he wanted to do it all in one package, and I'm glad that he did. Before the meeting was concluded, he agreed to submit a proposal for planting and making this look like a decent area next to the gentleman's property. He's gonna submit it by our next meeting. We'll review it, if it's satisfactory, we can, if we want changes, we can make changes. But his feet are to the fire now. He planted little things like that, the grass is growing right over me, you can't even see the shrubs.
Okay.
He did make an effort, if you can call it that. But it's, it's just barren, rocky, weeds all over the place, brush growing out of the ground. His argument was that it was supposed to be its natural condition. Well, his natural condition had about 12 large trees that had lawn lawns, and it wasn't, like it looks now, it's full of rocks and construction debris. And the fellow has a lawn up to that point, and he has to look at that, I mean, it's just ridiculous. But he finally agreed to do what he, what he said he would do.
Does he have other house lots, uncompleted?
Well, that was one of the, he didn't wanna do it, and I told him what our options were, was to issue an enforcement order that would prevent him from building any more houses, because that was done as part of the original subdivision...
Original subdivision.
Notice of intent, order of conditions. Not just that one individual lot, but that particular lot had a condition that required him to do the same thing. But he was trying to poo-poo it away.
No, he doesn't have a certificate of compliance on that.
Well, he was worried about how much it's gonna cost him, I said, well, it's not our problem, the money isn't our problem, you destroyed a conservation restricted area. And another option was to notify NHESP, because their conditions, it's specifically saying that that couldn't be, that couldn't take place. Construction could take place without damaging, all the restricted areas had to be posted, just like Jeff Tolman talked about, they have signs in the backyard, this one would have signs in his front yard. The only thing he did correctly was put in concrete posts...
Markers?
Yeah, markers, and delineate the area, but it's rough, it's ugly. Guy's got a lawn, and then he's got this scabby-looking thing between him and a wall.
Okay, so September meeting, we, we shall, hopefully see it.
I told him three weeks from Tuesday, we needed the...
Okay. What's the address of the site, Joe?
It's Lot 7, I don't know what the actual lot number is, it's on Naris Lane, on Centus Street.
What's the name of the street?
Naris, N-A-R-I-S, Lane.
Hi, what's happening?
Seven, you said number seven, Lot 7?
Yeah.
Okay, so, if, if he doesn't do it, then we, we should consider shutting down his, his entire site?
Yes. The block order would prohibit any more building until it's taken care of. They already have, I think, three homes in there. One, two, three, four. It's a nine-lot subdivision.
Who's the developer?
Matt, I can't think of his last name. He was one of the...
Rehoboth, I know. I'm trying, I'm trying to pull out his name and...
Antonio.
Antonio Rehoboth.
As a penalty, could you fine them for doing that?
Yes.
Have you considered that, or was...
No, it's a waste of time. The best thing to do is issue the enforcement order, money, the opportunity to make money is gonna be denied him, and he just has to do what he has to do. But he agreed to do it, when we started talking about getting a little tougher than talking.
Yeah.
He didn't wanna spend any money at all, well, that's too bad.
Well, he messed up. So he's gotta fix it, right?
Yeah, well, he blamed his contractor, but the applicant is responsible for the subdivision. All of the contractors that he hires have the same responsibility, but it all comes back to him.
Where can we wear this?
He put up with it while the house was under construction, but now he's got a lawn, I mean, he's got a home, and he's got this rubble thing right in the side of his front yard. It's just unfair.
An agreement's an agreement, so, that's good.
Okay. All right, we'll drive by, catch up, see how it's going. He's got three weeks?
Three weeks to submit his plan.
To submit to us.
And we're gonna consider it as our next hearing.
Did you ask him for multiple copies?
I can make copies.
Okay.
Copies are the easy part.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, he promised to, to do it, he did it.
I remember his hearing, oh yeah, I'm gonna do it, but he...
He did, he put about nine shrubs in there, but the grass is taller than the shrubs. He must have got them in six-inch pots. It's crazy.
Just gotta get out there, okay.
Well...
All right, anything else, or I'm gonna, I'm gonna, okay. On these chestnut trees that we have out here, I have made up little, little signs, and I've, I've attached them, and as they grow bigger and looking more important in our restoration program of the chestnuts, I was wondering if you would be willing to purchase some signs, permanent signs, and, you know, one for, the two that are over there, and one for the four here, and, you know, whether it reads something like that. That's what I have out there now, the American Chestnut Foundation, the Chestnut, American Chestnut Restoration Program, supported by Bristol Aggie and the Conservation Commission.
Is anybody out there familiar with American chestnuts? No?
Only Japanese, only Japanese, man.
No, I know something was going on with them, but I can't remember.
Jim would be happy to give you a little background.
Okay. Jeff Tolman, who was here, I saw something about Four Years in the Wind, four years ago, and I said, hmm. And so, I just remember my mother talking about chestnuts when she was a little girl, and I remember the hoss chestnuts, but American chestnut, never saw a tree, didn't, in just maybe the tree, I mean, the song at Christmas time, roasting chestnuts. And so I started looking it up, and started getting involved in it, and then I came across the American Chestnut Foundation, which has been working on hybridizing them, you know, through cross-pollination with Chinese chestnuts. And what they want is a 93% American, 7% Chinese, to develop resistance against the blight. Well, we got six of them out here. These six, the pollen has been coming, they're hand-pollinated, I know the last pollination came from the Carolinas, and I got them in October, I think, or November of 2014. So this is their second summer out here, and hopefully in three or four or five years from now, they'll, they'll be producing nuts, and they will be able to spread them around to get them growing in the forest again, because the animals just devour them. The American Chestnut Foundation works with Bristol Aggie, and the land that we were just talking about on the, on the first development, the one on Jennifer Lane, there's roughly 50 acres, I have 150 chestnut trees out there. That's what I've done to that property already, and I guess the, the land donor is excited to say, hey, here's somebody doing something about, you know, my donation. And I was out there two days ago, and, you know, we lost some because of the drought... drought, and the animals nibble on the, on the buds, but hopefully in ten years, those will, uh, start producing, some of them, some of them are gonna die because those aren't as high quality as these here. Bristol Aggie just got fifteen hundred seed this spring to start, and where are they going, I don't know, but, uh, the beginnings have started, you know, from the Chestnut Foundation to reintroduce American chestnuts throughout the northeast, well, the whole east coast, it goes from the Carolinas all the way, all the way to Maine.
When did most of them get wiped out? Because you know-
Early nineteen hundreds, uh, blight came in from China. Uh, I didn't bring my, that folder, otherwise I would've given, I would've, I'd have give out, uh, paperwork on it, because I have extras, but if you look up the American Chestnut Foundation online, and, and you'll get a, a wealth of information, there are, um, Dunston is a nursery, and they, they are selling American hybrids, but they're about fifty percent American, and so they're highly resistant, but they won't grow as the same. Uh, the nuts are different, uh, they're still edible, um-
They're not American nuts?
Um, well-
There're lots of them.
There, now we, we get a lot of them in Washington.
And locally.
There's, there's, um, uh, you know, they, they weather the blight very, very well, I know a guy in Rehoboth who, who bought some, and they're doing very well.
They start trying to grow in the woods naturally, but they get to be five or six or seven years old, uh, and they just, blight gets them and they die right in.
So, these here, hopefully, so hopefully, I mean, these here will grow hundreds of two-hundred feet of mature, a hundred to a hundred twenty feet of maturity. These will, these will grow bigger than any other tree out in the forest, I mean, millions and millions of them were killed by the blight, and, um, and, and the old saying from, from, uh, birth to, to the grave, I mean, cradles were made from them, houses were made from them, caskets, I mean-
People kept warm with them, built furniture with them.
Yeah, yeah, everything, every, it was, it was, uh-
Eight months.
Yeah, and, uh, I was given some Chinese chestnuts to see if, you know, I was just gonna start it and see what was gonna happen. They didn't last long, they gotta be protected, the squirrels or chipmunks or something, boom, gone, I mean, they're that sweet that they, that they eat them, and, and, um, so, you know, we're gonna need to get them going. But anyway, uh, let's go to my signage, uh, would you be willing to, uh, support-
Would we, total, we, would we be willing?
Would we be willing? Or, I, well, you, you're gonna vote, you know, would, would we be willing to, um-
You've got signs already on them, you said.
Yeah, but these are paper and they, and they fall apart, I wanna put something, uh, you know, you know, you have these signs, uh, you know, a sign like this here, a jack, I was showing Jack out there, um, you know, a nice, either metal or a heavy plastic, it's gonna be permanent, so that people can see it more than two feet away.
If you put them, I think if you just had your arms, you won't be able to do the chestnut.
Well, it's, it's, you know, if we get something a, a foot and a half by two feet, something, something like that, uh, you know-
Like the calendar.
Well, like the cali, yeah, the size of the calendar.
I know how you could get these for nothing.
Oh, yeah, well, you think they would do it?
I know they wouldn't.
Okay.
They get a sign shot over?
Yeah.
I'd love to do that.
Okay, aye, I didn't know that, and, and, um, Jack was talking about this one here, okay, all right, I'll go down to Bristol Aggie then and see if they can make them.
You know, they're not open yet.
Someone's there.
But the, the guy that you wanna talk to, he won't, he won't get it, Brian, back around.
Oh, he's the one that makes them?
No, he's, uh, he, he's the guy that you wanna discuss, and he'll have them laid up for you.
Ah, okay.
I don't know how to spell his last name, but it's-
I got it, I got it, it's on my computer, okay. Okay, that's very good then, so we don't have to put out anything.
No, he'll do it for you.
Okay, because in the wo, in the forest, I have, I have these here, I have about ten of them in plastic bags, just so the people can see them.
Good.
And, uh, and like someone had mentioned earlier, I'm not really looking to have hundreds of people tramping through there, because I don't want them stealing the trees, I don't want them, um, you know, and it's, it's, it's a lot of swamp, we just got a knoll that, that we got them planted on, and, um, that's all we need, is someone going through with a dirt bike and, or ATV.
Unless, unless they're watching that video, they probably wouldn't know.
Yeah, well, only the right people watch these. But, um, you know, and, uh, we'll, we'll have to see if we can get some of those fifteen hundred from Bristol Aggie and plant them on other property that we own.
Very good.
Okay. I move that we close the meeting.
I'll second that.
Well, we did have a question associated with Cytec's development on Milk Street, behind Milk Street. Um, the question I had is you guys, uh, I guess had put together, had somebody review that area, and you received the paperwork, I, I read that was what you were discussing before the meeting.
Continued to next month.
It's, and it's been continued to next month, I, just, the question I had was the person who reviewed that, what was the criteria that they had to, to review that, was it, I, I guess what's, what was that report, is it, were they looking at, you know, the, the property, uh, for water, were they looking for animals?
They're looking, they're looking for all of it.
All of it?
That is, if there's national heritage involved in it, wetlands, uplands, species, everything.
Okay, that's what I was curious, 'cause we, I know we have, you had mentioned that Cytec was dealing with, uh, turtle area, and I know that we have box turtles, and we have all kinds of turtles that show up on our lawns, on our regular basis, every year we see them come.
Salamanders, too.
Salamanders are another one we, we see, so there is a lot of, 'cause it's, I mean, there's a pond right behind, uh, my property, that's, you hear the ducks come in, you hear the, the hawks that are, that are right there, oh, that fly overhead, and, you know, that, you know, so there's a lot of wildlife right there, and, um-
What area are you talking about right now?
I'm talking about the area, it's, 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 uh, it would be Milk Street, behind Milk Street, where this, where Cytec is looking to develop.
Okay. National Heritage establishes, uh, turtle habitats, and, uh, I'm not too sure there's a turtle habitat there.
Well, there's turtles.
You can pull up on-
Ancient turtles, box turtles, they show up on my lawn every year.
Well, right now it's not protected.
Uh, yeah, I don't know.
If you have, if you find turtles and report it to N H E S P, they're the ones that determine the areas of protection, not us. They, they have, uh, overlays of wetland maps that show national heritage protected areas in this town, I mean, they're all over the place, along the Tonkin River, right to the shore, that's a, a protected area, areas on Center Street, uh, areas on Pine Street, uh, all over town. But in order to be protected, it has to be approved by N H E S P. The site we were talking about, Center Street Woods, had no protection, one of the neighbors discovered a turtle, photographed it, sent the photograph to N H P along with a letter, and they investigated the area, they couldn't find any turtles, but it was a habitat, so they made it a habitat. Well, I mean, if you wanna get active and use something like that to prevent this development, then you gotta get on the ball.
Okay.
Well, but, yeah, that's why most of us are here to learn that, because we have seen that thing.
What turtle is the protected one?
Spotted turtles and sun turtles are not protected.
Eastern box turtle?
What about the water supply?
Yeah, box turtles protected.
They have, well, a couple of other species, but that's the one that's a normal look for this area.
How about a spotted salamander, are those-
Snapper turtles and other things don't come.
Don't come.
It has to be this particular type of turtle, I think they have two, maybe three species that are protected.
There's a wood turtle.
This turtle is an upland turtle, it doesn't live in, in ponds, it goes to ponds-
Right.
But it's primarily, its habitat is the forest floor.
Yeah. I'll have to see what kind of turtle it is, I have pictures.
Okay, now, I, I haven't started really, well, I just got it a little while ago, and, but I did see something here that she found four potential rental pools on the site, so, I mean, this, this woman does a good job, she goes through and she looks at, uh, their map, what they've done, and then what they haven't done.
Yeah.
I mean, she gets into it.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, thirty years ago, this was dirt, I mean, 'cause when they, you know, originally when they dug the whole area up, took all the gravel out, it was down to the water table, um, that whole area from the back of us.
There used to, there used to be two houses on Milk Street, that was it.
That's right, that's correct, yep, one of them's across the street.
All the rest of that was squash and, yeah, raised peppers over there, they raised squash, you could look from there all the way down to, uh, Elm Street.
Yep.
Those are farms.
Yep, and, and in the back area, that's where they'd taken all the gravel off, they left just the street area.
Yeah.
But that was down to the water table, 'cause I used to, if I walked back there, like, you'd just sink in the mud, 'cause you were right at the water table.
Well, you're gonna have plenty of time to, uh, espouse your views, because this is just the first step along.
Yeah, no, I'm sure, uh, I was just curious, I hadn't, uh-
What they're trying to do now is establish the upland areas that they can design-
Yep.
A subdivision around.
Yeah.
They may not be able to.
Yeah.
Well, they made, got one or two houses.
Right.
We don't know.
But they still have to get access to get back there.
That's my point, is how are they gonna see this whole thirty-something?
They proposed to go into Milk Street.
They proposed to go in from Milk Street?
Yeah.
Where the road is?
They have enough room there, if, if the consultant agrees with the flags that are already there, uh, they have enough room to construct a road.
Yeah, that's probably further down, I, I-
There's an intermittent stream there, they flagged the wetlands around it.
Yep.
Uh, I read it briefly, uh, she approved a lot of the flags, there's a couple that aren't, but there are areas that aren't on the plan, that she considers potential wetlands or wetlands, isolated and, uh, under the act, and, uh, under our bylaw.
Clearly, there's some-
And there are a couple of, uh-
Oh, absolutely.
Intermittent streams that don't have, uh, are not delineated by the applicant, and, they will be.
Yeah.
And all those things will affect, eventually, we'll end up approving some kind of, uh-
Yeah.
Plan.
Yeah, that's, and, uh, so who do we contact?
The areas that she discovered that went on the plan, uh, may affect it greatly, may, maybe not.
Who should we contact, associated with turtles or any other wild mother?
Pardon?
National Heritage.
National Heritage.
It's part of Fish and Wildlife.
Okay, the one picture going on right now. I'll entertain the motion again.
I move that we close our meeting.
And I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Do they have a proposal over there?
So-